We be in charge of it. I've known Doug, I don't know how many years, thirty years, a very long period of time. We worked together in the school system, through the SRO, and one of the best, best people at that job that I've ever seen. And when Doug walked in, he was in charge, and I said a word. He just walked in, and everybody knew Doug was in charge, so that was great. And Doug's also pastor of the New Church Without Walls. He's a veteran, Citrus County resident. He goes to many, many different organizations and helps, some have the food, getting food for people who need it, maybe housing, all the different needs people have. Because that's what kind of person Doug is. He wants to help people, and help them meet the needs they have, and work with them. Very proud to know him, very proud of him. And I asked him if he would come in and begin doing the opening exercises and then move into the touch play. So Doug, if you could come on up? I'll sit there. They go over to him.
Oh my God, I almost forgot one thing, I have a picture right here, guys. He's Citizen of the Year.
First, let me thank you guys very much, I appreciate you. Actually, Sam Hemmo, Doug, and all the, everybody's up here with us, everybody's actually very close to me, everybody's sitting around here. Doug and I were school resource officers, and actually Amy Mix is back here, and she's one of our students as a student, and also Ms. Sherri Sernich was a school resource officer. So we got a lot of history here in this place, and just a lot of people, Ms. Alagretta and Rich Hill, but just, just a great community, a great county. I'm grateful, I'm just thankful to be here today, so this is so many incredible people. But I appreciate you guys having me be here, so would you join me in prayer? Dear Lord, thank you so much, we come together today in your name. I ask your blessing to be upon this board meeting today. We have many students here, Lord, many of them have speeches, and competition from art. God, we ask your blessing to be upon them, and be upon our schools. We pray a special prayer for our students in school, and God, for the tragedy, these things that's happening in school. We pray that you keep our schools safe, and we thank you for the governmental board here, Lord, Wes Bradshaw, Mike Mullen, and staff, or Thomas Kennedy, or we ask blessing to be upon him, and Virginia, Doug Dodd, and Sandra, Linda, and Sam Hemmo. We ask your blessing to be upon them. Mike Mullen and his entire staff will just continue to give them wisdom and guidance as they continue to lead this school board. We pray for everyone in this room today, Lord. We ask you a very special blessing to be upon me, Father. Father, we thank you for all the great things that this school board is doing, and that they will continue to do. Bless this community, bless our state, bless our nation. Father, we pray, the prayer that you taught your disciples. Our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thy is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory, ever and always. I'm gonna ask God, Amy, if she can come and help us with, lead me with the, the levers. I'm passing the buck.
Face the flag, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Doug, thanks so much, Amy. Okay, we've got the adoption of the agenda, but before we adopt the agenda, we need to approve amendment to the charter school agreement between Citrus, Mike Pro School, and Integrated Academies and Technologies, and the school board of Citrus County. Is there any objection to it being placed on the consent agenda? Seeing none, place that on the consent agenda. And also, under presentations, we're gonna do a little flip flop. Item B will come before item A. All right. Now, if we have a motion to adopt the agenda. Ms. Powers has made the motion, Mr. Dodd has seconded it. Any questions or comments? All is in favor? Aye. Motion carries five zero. Now, we have citizens' comments, these are comments reserved for anybody wanting to speak on anything that's on the agenda. All right. Seeing none, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'm sure I make a motion to approve the consent agenda in a second.
Thank you, Mr. Dodd, Mr. Kennedy. Mr. Dodd has made the motion, Mr. Kennedy has seconded it, that we approve the consent agenda. And Ms. Verderwone, could we get a recognition of the nation?
Yes, ma'am. The five hundred dollar donation to Jonesburg Elementary School from the Quan's Public Emerson Foundation, a reading center value of six hundred and nine dollars a year, sent to the Kanto Primary School from Jonesburg Chief Board, a fifteen hundred dollar donation to Public Health Elementary School in memory of Kate Miller and Paul Wheeler, a two thousand dollar donation to the Kanto Middle School Private Construction Company, a five hundred dollar Walmart brand donation to the St. programs in this middle school, a five hundred dollar Walmart, Walmart brand donation to the St. program during this middle school, a five hundred dollar Walmart brand donation to the PDS program in this middle school, twenty five hundred dollar Walmart brand donation to the St. in the Winter Park Program in this middle school, a one thousand three hundred sixty nine dollar donation to Citrus County Education Foundation donation to the St. program during this middle school, a donation of two thousand five hundred inside automobile value of fifteen hundred to the Puchet technical college of a private owner, a donation of two thousand nine Ford Crown Victoria Septr automobile value of thirty five hundred to the Puchet technical college of Citrus County Sheriff's Department, a donation of forty cases valued at approximately one hundred dollars each to the Puchet technical college of Citrus County Sheriff's Office, a five hundred dollar donation to Citrus High School with Project Health Inc., a five hundred dollar donation to Citrus High School for Mandala's Pizza, a nine hundred dollar donation to Citrus High School for Charter Communications, a one thousand dollar donation to Crystal River High School from Joseph F. Bennett Senior Trust and Care for Michael Galantos CPA trustee, a one thousand eighty dollar donation to Green Science Station from Central Coast Lady Anglers for Postal, and a five hundred dollar donation to Cora Association of School Administrators to pilot a character education program for secondary school.
Wow. And thank you very much. Could I, oh, are there any questions or comments? All is in favor? Aye. Motion carries five zero. That's awesome. Thank you, Ms. Verderwone. Okay, now is when we're going to do the Festival of the Arts Student Award Winners. Who's in charge of that? Bruce, come on down, Bruce.
Excuse me, Mr. Sheffield, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, members of the board, Mrs. Hemmo, Mr. Muller, and Mr. Bradshaw. It's my privilege today to introduce to you our high school award of excellent winners from this year's forty-fifth annual Festival of the Arts that was in downtown Emerson. Each, each year, the city of Emerson holds a Festival of the Arts in downtown Emerson. And Citrus County Schools has two tents that we provide for students from the, our elementary middle and high school, to bring their art, or the teachers bring their art to the, to the Festival of the Arts and display their artwork for the, for the public to see what's going on in our public schools. We also, at the high school level, we have a committee that usually comes from one of our local universities to come in and judge the art and award, award of excellence. It's my privilege this afternoon to introduce to you and recognize the students from Crystal River, Citrus, La Canto High, and Crest School. So as I call your name up, please come up to the front with the representative from your school. We're gonna start with Citrus High School. Our first, our first high school award of excellent winner is Jasmine Lopez. And we have Ariana Rose, and I believe she's unable to attend today, Anna Savoy, Nathan Steffi. Thank you. Our next, Crystal River High School, representative from Crystal River High, please come up. Sally Wright, art teacher. First, first person we'd like to recognize is Diana Herr.
Oh, she's a cop.
She's a cop, because she ran away a little hard for her meter. Sarah Parr. Hunter Pelletier.
Okay, Hunter's in comments.
And Nate Walters. Okay, our next school, La Canto High School, is there a representative from the front? High School, hey, I didn't see you come in.
Did you talk about all of them?
No, we talked about one at a time. First, first person we'd like to recognize is Olivia Holland. Okay. Kethrin Peppara, is that right? Is that her?
Is that her?
Joe Liam, you're the next person to be recognized. Monica McBride. And the last one, Tiffany Hanks, she didn't make it, okay. And now we'd like to recognize our Crest, students from Crest. This is Jenny Brew, the teacher. And Jeremiah June, please come on up. And Carmen Osterloh, if you'll please come up. Our final recognition today is a, is a new project that was started, this started, this is the first year for this project. Last year, the legislators in Tallahassee passed a bill, House Bill seven zero one, that talks, and it was art in the Capitol. And it was, what it is, is a contest for middle school students to present art, present artwork, and to be judged, and the winning, the winning piece for your district or your school district will be taken to Tallahassee and hang in the, in the Capitol during the upcoming session. Our contest was held during the Festival of the Arts, and it's my pleasure this year to announce our, the Citrus County winner for the Art in the Capitol competition is from La Canto Middle School, and her name is Madison Weddingham. We have an administrator and her teacher here, she has a... Her art is, her art has been delivered to Senator Simpson. And that is her picture that is going to be hanging in Tallahassee, starting in March, when they, when session opens.
You ready?
Ready.
Thank you so much, that's all right.
Okay, to continue on with the agenda, that's the recognition of the elementary and secondary Trump candidate winners, I believe that's next on the agenda.
Good afternoon, Mrs. Hemmo, Mr. Bradshaw, the board. I'm happy to present today our district level, fourth and fifth grade winners, and our middle school winners. Before we actually have the students come to the speeches, I'd like to introduce Dr. Marty Ward from the Citrus Annex High School Extension. She's gonna talk to you about the Trump speech program here in Citrus County.
Thank you. That's the University of Florida's Institute of Food and Agricultural Sciences Extension Office, that is right here in Citrus County, and that's where you'll find us. And for over forty years, Florida 4-H, the Tropicalina Corporation, and local school districts just like yours have partnered to bring public speaking opportunities to tens of thousands of fourth, fifth, and sixth grade students across the state of Florida. You've gained skills in organization, critical thinking, reasoning, and communication through this program. In Citrus County, last year, we opened opportunities for over thirty-five hundred students to take part in our program, and I'm so pleased that so many of our winners were able to be here this afternoon to share those speeches with you.
And we're actually gonna start with our sixth grade participants. It's a little early for elementary school students, so we're going to begin with our honorable mention, Peter Bala from Seven Rivers Christian School, and his speech is entitled,
Mr. Huber, can you put, can you put the laptop down here? Thank you.
Welcome to the catastrophic life story of my kitten Meadow. My poor kitten Meadow isn't even one year old, but from the usual fleas and ticks to broken bones, she's been through so much. But the main three things are a weird lumpy lump, a crazy game of bagdad gone wrong, and a dwee de dwee de puey. The first catastrophe is the weird lumpy lump. One day we noticed she had a lump on her neck with a tiny hole right in the middle. It was oozing some slightly blood tinge fluid. My mom thought it was a spider bite, but the vet said it was a botfly bite. See, a botfly is kinda like a horsefly, except when it bites, it inserts a larvae worm under the skin that grows there till it turns into a botfly and flies out. The little hole is a blowhole that the worm could come to for fresh air. Meadow had to have her larvae worm cut out. Ugh. The second catastrophe was when Meadow played a crazy game of tag with an Outback Steakhouse bag. She probably curled into it because it still smelled a bit like a blooming onion. She was having a great time playing in it until she got her left leg stuck in the handle and started to walk away. She thought the bag was after her. It was funny at first, watching her sit one way and then sag the other, with that bag flopping after her every step, but then she panicked and took up running, hitting the dining room table, breaking her hind left leg. Poor kitten, she had to wear a tiny pink cast for a month. Moral of that story, cut all handles to bats if you have a curious kitten like Meadow. The third catastrophe was the dwee de dwee de puey. All of a sudden Meadow started peeing in really strange places, like on the burner close of the stove, and right in the middle of the dining room table. She even left me a present in my box of Legos. So my mom checked her out to see what was bothering her, then mom called. Peter! Oh, Peter, bring the scissors and baby wipes. Okay. See, Meadow was very fluffy. Her tail is so poofy, she always looks like she's super scared, which explains why she had a little trouble cleaning her tushy after using the litter box. Mom and I cleaned and cut out hunks and chunks of matted pooey. So as you can see, with the botfly bite, the broken leg, and the dreaded matted pooey, my poor kitten Meadow has had a very catastrophic life. They say tough times come in threes, so hopefully Meadow has gotten her three out of the way, and will live a long, catastrophe-free, seven more lives.
Thank you, Peter, nice job. Unfortunately, our third place participant, Darla Edwards, could not be here today, so we are gonna move on to our second place winner, who is Zoe Word from Emerson Middle School, and the title of her speech is Autism. Hi, it appears Zoe is not able to join us, so we will move on to our first place district sixth grade winner, Zach Hooper from La Canto Middle, and his speech is entitled, "Annoying
Have you ever gotten really tired of hearing those annoying commercials? The ones that are louder than your TV shows? Yeah, those. Here are a few of the most annoying commercials of all time. First of all, let's talk about Jake from State Farm commercials. I mean, think of how many times you've seen or heard that one. Also, people sometimes say, "I'm Jake from State Farm." The ad first debuted five years ago. Keep up with the trends, people. Other annoying ads are the insurance commercials. The TV stations sometimes play insurance ads back to back. I can't stand those. Insurance by Allstate, click or call. Do you know the most interesting man in the world? So let me get this straight. If I drink your product, I'll become the most interesting person in the world? Come on, people, we're not that stupid. Medical commercials are by far the most annoying. I can't list them all, but here are two. Florida Pain Relief Group and Cialis. Where do I start? Florida Pain Relief, please get a different jingle. It's just too catchy and becomes a brain worm. Two people holding hands in different bathtubs is just silly, and what kind of name is Cialis anyway? A seal with a list? Another category of annoying commercials would have to be fast food. Hardee's, McDonald's, and Burger King all have frequent airtime. We all know that there's false advertising that goes on in the fast food business. The Big Mac Whopper and the spicy jalapeno chicken sandwich all look so good. The Whoppers look so great in commercials, but appear squished and deflated in real life. The same thing happens with the Big Mac. All those claims about one hundred percent raw beef may be true, but I'm still skeptical. The spicy jalapeno chicken sandwich isn't actually that bad, it just needs a shorter name. All in all, fast food really isn't that bad, just bad for you. It's certainly true that some commercials are not annoying, but many are. The salespeople are doing their job if their slogans and songs get stuck in your head for days. They want you, the consumer, to remember their products and companies when you go to buy food, insurance, medicine, or have surgery. Watching excessive TV may cause the following side effects. Not hot burning dishes, waking up to stomach diarrhea, frequent urinaline, small feet and hands all suffishing heart tiger death. Remember to enjoy your favorite TV programs, and don't forget the mute button for the commercials.
All right, we're actually gonna have the pleasure of hearing Zoe Word's speech, Autism. She just walked in.
Autism, it's a six-letter word with a huge meaning, and I would like to tell you about it. Autism is a complex disorder of the brain. These disorders are characterized by varying degrees of categories. Some examples are social interactions, relationships with others, verbal and nonverbal communication, and limited interest in activities. While a good percentage of us can carry on a conversation with our friends and family, or show an interest in a sport or activity, individuals with autism will likely not show any interest. People with autism have a hard time making eye contact, showing emotions, making friends, talking, and may become attached to a certain object. More facts include, one in sixty-eight children are diagnosed with autism. It appears in all ethnic and socioeconomic groups. It's four and a half times more common among boys and girls. That's one in forty-two boys diagnosed. Forty percent will never talk, and almost half of the children identified with this disorder have average to above average intellectual abilities. In addition, about one percent of the world's population has autism. So what causes autism? That is still unknown. Researchers suggest it could be the number of things, from vagabondalitry, but most parents of autistic children claim to the vaccines, but no one knows for sure. So why did I choose this topic? To bring awareness of autism to those that don't know about it. Autism means so much to the families that have to deal with loved ones that suffer with this disorder. It also means so much to me, because my favorite person in the world has autism, my older brother Zacky. He has been through so much since being diagnosed at the age of four. He is now sixteen. My brother Zacky rarely ever makes eye contact or shows emotions, and he doesn't talk, but he has an attachment to his blanket, his most favorite thing in the world, besides potato chips. I'm hoping I gave little insight to what autism is. Believe it or not, most of you've never heard about it, until now.
All right, nice job, middle school participants. Now we're gonna move on to our fourth and fifth grade winners, starting with our honorable mention, Caleb Nagy from Homasasa Elementary, with his speech entitled, "First NFL Game."
Have you ever wanted something so badly that you'd do anything for it? Well, that anything for me was a ticket for my first NFL game, and I had to save every dollar I could to go see my beloved Dolphins play. Listen up, and you'll hear what this trip meant to me, why it was special, and the lesson I learned. Raise your hand if you have never been to an NFL game. See, so many people have never been to one, but I have. My parents went to five games without me, but this time it was my turn. I had to save sixty-eight dollars just to get there. That meant mowing the lawn, doing my siblings chores, and worst of all, washing the dirty dishes. This was definitely a well-earned ticket, which meant more to me than just getting a free ticket. After all that work, I knew that this trip was going to be special. I just didn't know how special. The memories started on the five-hour drive down to Miami. We stopped halfway to get something to eat, and we, and my dad got me my own iced coffee to stay awake for the entire game. Don't tell my mom. Once we checked into our hotel, we went straight to the stadium. What a sight. Once we parked, I learned what tailgating was, but that's a story for another day. And I walked in the And I walked in the stadium, I saw how green the grass was, how huge the stadium was, and how real the players looked. This is cooler than watching it on TV. I thought it couldn't get better till I saw my favorite player, Jarvis Landry, run for 46 yards and almost outran the entire Falcons defense. I was in football heaven. This experience also taught me lessons I still use today, like hard work and sacrifice will help you achieve your goal, but make the experience special. In conclusion, I thought I'd remember just again. Just the opposite happened. Again, a good story, that story has a moral, and this moral is, hard work and perseverance bring reward.
Nice job, Caleb. Now we're gonna go to our third place winner, Kylie Moran from Central Ridge Elementary, with her speech entitled "Niagara Falls Greatest Daredevils."
Introducing Niagara Falls' greatest daredevils. For those of you that do not know what daredevils are, I will tell you. Daredevils are people that do extremely dangerous stunts. They do this to either become famous or make a lot of money, and sometimes both. These stunts that I'm going to tell you about have taken place at Niagara Falls. Daredevils choose Niagara Falls because of its height and the falls are a huge tourist attraction, so there's always a lot of people around. Now keep in mind, these stunts are very dangerous, so I don't advise anyone to try them. The first daredevil I'd like to tell you about is a man by the name of Charles Blondin. Charles tied-robed across Niagara Falls. Oh, sorry about this, folks. I forgot to tell you what tie-roading is. Tie-roading is when you walk across a small rope high in the air from one place to another. He not only did it once, he did it several times. He did it blindfolded, pushing a wheelbarrow, wearing stilts, and carrying a man on his back. One time, he did a very bizarre thing while crossing. Charles stopped halfway across the falls, sat down, untied-robed, and cooked and ate an omelet. How would you like to eat your breakfast on a tightrope? Oh, I know that would not be for me. Now let me tell you about Annie Exentaylor and her daredevil stunt. Annie was the first person to go over Niagara Falls and survive. Annie was a 63-year-old school teacher. That's right, a school teacher! Annie went over the falls in a padded wooden barrel. She survived the 173-foot plunge over the falls. Her only injury was a small gash on her head. Now you may be asking yourself why she would do something like this. Well, she was having money troubles and thought it would be a good way to make money and become famous. And do you know what? She made more money signing autographs than risking her life going over the falls. Now that I've told you about these two daredevils, what do you think? Do you think daredevils are brave, or do you think that they are just bizarre?
Alright, nice job Kylie. Next, we have our second place winner, Ivy Lewis from Laurel City Elementary, and her speech is entitled "The P Word."
Let me tell you about the worst morning of my life. If I woke up and realized it was happening, the dreaded P word. I'm sure you have a huge question mark in your head right now, wondering, "What is the P word?" Well, it's puberty, that's right. P-U-B-E-R-T-Y, puberty. I knew this day would come, but I didn't expect it to hit me in the face so soon. I mean, it literally hit me in the face in the form of a huge red zit right on the end of my nose. I went running down the hall screaming, "My life is over!" My mom said, "Ivy, what is wrong with you?" In such a calm voice, since she knows I'm a drama queen and over-exagger everything. I said, "Look at this huge thing on my nose. There's no way I can walk in public like this." She said, "Ivy, this is all part of puberty, it happens to everyone. Now go get ready for school." I put my head down and sunk all the way back to my room. As I was getting ready for school, all I could think about was how I was gonna hide this horrific thing. Since I'm not allowed to wear makeup, may... maybe a band-aid would do the trick. Go figure, we were out of band-aids. So what's the next best thing? Duck tape. I cut a small piece of my teeter-pen duct tape and stuck it on the end of my nose. I figured I would be a walking fashion statement, and no one would know that I was hiding. When I came out of my room, my mom said, "You have got to be kidding me. Get that off your nose." Aw, man, I guess I'm just gonna have to face the day head-on. Only a few of my friends made a comment, and my reply was, "Your day will come." After getting through those horrifying few days, I thought maybe that P word was gone for a while. Until that day. That's right, I had another embarrassing moment when the P word attacked my armpits. I was riding in the car, and I reached up to my mom something when my sister yelled, "O-M-G, you have a verbal under your armpit." I looked down, and wouldn't you know it, it looked like black silly string hanging there. I cried out loud, "Why is this happening to me? I can't imagine what's gonna be next." So when the P word comes your way, just know that since it didn't end my life, it won't end yours. According to my mom, it's not the end of the world, you'll live, it happens to the best of us. But right now, I'm planning to be a scientist, so when I grow up, I can invent a vaccine for the P word.
Alright, we're gonna end with our first place elementary winner, Addie Smith from Rock Crusher Elementary School, and her speech is entitled "The Sheepdog."
I am a cops kid, which means my family can't watch a single CSI episode without snarky comments from my dad about how unrealistic the investigation is. It means that when we sit down at a restaurant, I know to give my dad the view of the door just in case, heaven forbid, a gang of criminals come barreling through the entryway. Having a law enforcement officer for a dad means that I can't get away with anything because he's literally a human lie detector. But, it also means that every morning I give my daddy a big hug goodbye as he leaves for work. My cheek presses against the star on his gray uniform. I pray that he'll be safe and that he'll walk through the door at night. I know that I'm not the only one who prays that prayer. Yet every year, more than 150 sworn law enforcement officers don't make it home to kiss their kids goodnight. And tragically, that number is on the rise. In fact, there has been a 72% increase in officers being shot and killed since last year. That means that quite possibly today, kids across our nation will hug their mommies and daddies in uniform for the last time. Officers protect and defend others on a daily basis. These courageous superheroes run towards danger as others run away. They are our guardians and offenders. And while it is true that there are wolves prowling through the darkness wishing to do harm to the sheep, it is equally true that there are sheepdogs who guard the innocent, vulnerable flock. Our men and women in uniform are these sheepdogs. There's a poem that describes this perfectly. Make no mistake, I will defend my brothers, I will defend the weak, I will defend our way of life. I will pursue relentlessly all who threaten my people. I will sacrifice so that others may live. I am a citizen, I'm an American, I am a sheepdog. So as I said before, I am a cops kid, which means my daddy is one of those sheepdogs, and I couldn't be more proud to be his daughter.
Can we have all the students who make speeches come up front? And I just wanna add to Addie's speech. I think I've said to Brad a couple times, "I do watch CSI," and I've always asked Brad, "They can solve two crimes in an hour." I just, no kidding.
Expectations are a little high.
Guys, great job today. We all made very good progress. Are we good? Alright, great job, guys.
Just wanna say thank you for letting us showcase our students. They did such an amazing job. All of the students that spoke at the district competition, at the school competitions, we're very proud of them, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you.
I understand we had another individual that was involved with Festival Arts and has arrived. Did you draw it, so can we recognize that person, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. We had another winner of the Art Alexi Art Excellence, and that is Tiffany Yankee from La Canto High School.
And again, we want to thank all of you participants in the Top Kid Speech Contest. Congratulations, and thank you for coming to share with us. We do love these kids. And we're gonna have a recognition of the 2016-2017 Citrus County District Campaign on representatives from United Way Education Foundation to complete the company's goals.
I think Shonda, did you wanna come on down?
Yeah, I'll let you go first.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. I'm Amy Neat from United Way, and once again, we had a great campaign within the school district through workplace giving. We're so thankful for everyone who got involved to give, and we want to recognize the group that actually had the largest campaign. And this year, it is not a school, but a department, which is really amazing. And truly, this department is led by Regina Alagretta, who is our workplace giving campaign chair. But also, if you've met with her team, which I know you all have, they... you're really preaching to the choir when you go talk to them about helping others in our community and about the plight of the students in our district. So it was an easy sell on those folks. So congratulations to you and your amazing team. We really do appreciate all that you do. I'd just like to add that... Now, she is the one that tallied it all up, so you know.
I just wanted to make one more comment about United Way and all of the work that we do together, really just to thank the school board and recognize all of you for the opportunity for United Way to be involved in so many different aspects of the school district, from pre-K all the way up to high school seniors. This year, United Way's investment in school district-related activities exceeds $300,000. So it's truly our honor to continue this work and to continue helping to serve those who are in need. And I just wanna thank all of you for your leadership and the great work that you do to help families in Citrus County. So thank you very much.
I too just want to, first of all, congratulate Regina and her team. 28 individuals made up this grand donation. The last four years has been a school site with over 100 employees contributing. So to be able today to stand before you and say 28 people made that difference, we are forever grateful with that. At this time, if I could ask Alejandra Núñez to step up. Alejandra was one of our art students who serves as our student intern. If she can come up front with us for just a moment. I wanna talk just a moment about the foundation, what we're doing, our programs that we have. From payroll deduction being the amazing piece about that is, our sole mission and purpose is to support the school district and the teachers. And to know that the teachers are the ones giving back to us to make that happen truly speaks volumes about this great county and this great school system. Alejandra is a student at La Canto High School who has made an amazing impact on the foundation. All of the work that she has done at the school district office and also throughout the community. Without students like her being a part of our board, we would not be as truly successful as we are. So we're grateful for our teachers, we're grateful for our school board, and we're grateful for our students, and we're grateful for United Way. They do a lot of amazing things in our district that continues to bless the students and families of Citrus County. So again, we wanna say thank you. Thank you, Ms. Alagretta, and to your team, and we will be by to serve a delicious lunch very soon. So thank you for that. And thank you again to our school board and Mrs. Hemel for all that you do. We appreciate it, thank you.
Alright, while we're cheering over here, I'd like to ask Ms. Alagretta to come with that trophy up to the podium, because I understand that it's a trophy that travels around, but I wanted you to read the other names, because what is this, the fifth or sixth year we've done this? I'm not really sure which year this is.
Well, this is the fifth year that we've had the trophy.
A fifth year of the trophy, okay.
We've had it done prior to that, we just did not have it. I have to do anything for any of those, so I had to have some kind of physical reward. So I put up the traveling trophy there. This trophy was created out of about 10 different trophies. We were on a very tight budget in our office, so we begged and borrowed for leftover trophies and company put this together for us. So I will share with you that for four years running, Citrus Springs Elementary did showcase this trophy. So...
Citrus Springs Elementary, okay.
And we were just so surprised.
Those look like Keever tears.
And there were some Harold tears in there.
There was some Harold tears, too. Alright, so the challenge is out there for all our...
The challenge is out there, and so the board knows in our community, our district contributes over $21,000 in total. So that's an amazing contribution because to my organization. So thank you for letting me showcase it to you.
Alright, thank you very much.
Okay. We're ready to move on. Explain, you're up.
Good afternoon. I am here to ask approval of the instructional and support recommendations as outlined in the Goldenrod.
I would like to accept the superintendent's recommendation of personnel support.
Ms. Countess? We have a motion by Ms. Countess and a second by Mr. Kennedy. Do you have any comments or questions? All those in favor, behind, carry side zero.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Mr. Dixon? Thank you, you have a good evening. Hold the leg reaction there.
Good afternoon, everyone. I have actually three items, this one agenda request.
Alright.
And with the conclusion, I would like you to give us direction on, first of all, accepting the capacity report, and give us direction on proceeding with the rezoning, which I'll go into in a minute. Approve the controlled open enrollment plan for the 1718 school year, which is essentially the same as the current year, we just updated it to reflect the school choice requirements. And to also advertise for a public hearing at the April 11th school board meeting to approve the new attendance boundaries. And I'll begin, there may be one or more board members that have not been through a rezoning before, so I'll just kind of give you an overview of how we determine when it's necessary, as well as, you know, when it's appropriate to start planning for new facilities. But it's basically a year-long process that begins, it starts on the last Monday before the winter break, and we take a snapshot of enrollment, so that we have a firm number that we can compare year after year, to see what's really happening within each of the schools. Because as you all know, enrollment fluctuates throughout the year, so you kind of have to have a snapshot at a given point in time to see what's really happening. And in the enrollment report, I take that to the Long Range Planning Committee, and so they heard it last Thursday, and I went over with them. But in the, in the enrollment report, I go through the high schools, you can see what the available capacity was in December, what it was the December before. I do the same thing for the middle schools and the elementary schools. And that way, you can kind of see what kind of trends are starting to, to occur, are occurring. And when you get up to around 95% in an elementary school, you can really tell that you're getting near capacity. And a lot of this depends on how old the school is, and how it's designed with respect to core capacity and traffic, the ability to, you know, physically get students through the facility at lunchtime, you know, these are all things that have a bearing on capacity. So what we like to do is, we like to plan well, going ahead, ahead of time when we're going to be rezoning, so that we can get capacity in the facilities where they need to be. So, we haven't rebalanced the attendance boundaries in quite a few years for elementary schools. The last time we did it was when we built a new facility, and we just basically filled the facility up to about 85% and reduced the enrollment at the surrounding facilities. But over time, what happens is that certain parts of the county grow faster than others. So it'd be nice if they all grew at the same rate.
And that would be.
But it just doesn't work that way. So essentially, what, what we have in Citrus County is we have growth based on the availability of affordable housing. And the area that grows the most, it's not necessarily where the most homes are being built, but it's where the homes are available, and where people are moving in with children. So Beverly Hills, Citrus Springs area continues to be, over the last 10 years, the area that's growing the fastest, it has a lot of available single-family homes. The area in Homosas, La Canto Primary, has a very large boundary, so it has a lot of room for growth. This is the current enrollment boundary, so this is La Canto Primary, it's the largest elementary school, and it encompasses the largest land area. So it really has the ability to grow the fastest because it encompasses such a large area. And when it gets full, it really is an issue, because as you know, you know, elementary schools are staffed the same regardless if they're 300 students or 800 students. So as far as a lot of support, you know, you really need to keep an eye on it. You can see Forest Ridge Elementary here, it's the most consolidated zone, because there's such a high concentration of, of students in that area. So what we're basically proposing to do is, in light of the fact that, you know, Pleasant Grove has consistently maintained 100%, right around 100% capacity, it's like 102 right now, and it's projected to be 101% next year, to move some students out of Pleasant Grove down to Floral City, where we've been planning and expanding the core capacity with the sewer plant expansions and other things. And eventually, you know, that'll become a larger school. Also move a few from IPS because of traffic and because it's not really well-suited for core capacity, similar to Crystal River Primary a few years ago, when, when we remodeled it and we made it smaller, and let, you know, kept it on the same Hudson Bus Lane, enhanced the core capacity, it's much more functional, much better operating. And then also, let's see, move a few up to Hernando Elementary in order to reduce the population of Pleasant Grove, or north of State Road 44. And I'll get into the middle school in just a second. But I wanted to just give you a snapshot of, overall, we have gained 91 elementary school students over the course of the year. We gained 19 middle school students and lost 57 high school students. And that doesn't necessarily mean that we've lost students, but a lot of that is attributable to dual enrollment and other options that high school students have. It's not just a local trend, it's a trend state-wide that the high school total enrollment FTE is going down, and a lot of it is just because of the new options that high school students have. But also, in the report, summarize the different activities in the county that are, that are happening that could potentially impact the school system. And, you know, I've got the Inverness issue, which we talk about every year or so, with the US 41 widening project, which has been put back in the MPO plan, but it's gone for a while. And we still realize there's a problem there, and we're trying to, to work on a solution, but it's one of those things that's kind of outside of our scope of the ability to address right now, but it's still on the radar. The sidewalk projects that, that have been approved, one at Pleasant Grove is slated for construction in 2018, or no, 2020, and one in Beverly Hills is slated for construction in 2018. These are both projects that are going to be managed by FDOT, which is, which is really good, that the county's not even going to have to manage the projects. We've also applied for two more Safe Routes to School projects, and one, another one at Forest Ridge that would extend it all the way down to 491, and another one at Crystal River High School, which we think both of those have a good shot at being approved. We have La Canto Education Complex Traffic Circulation Evaluation Project, which is an impact fee fundable project, which the board county commissioners approved for funding today with some caveats that may need to be discussed, but nonetheless, that's a project that will add core capacity to La Canto complex to address public safety. Suncoast Two Project, which is still underway, that I think will have a dramatic effect in a long, over the longer term, especially for the center part of the county, Central Ridge. And the County Road 491 Project, and I list that on there, because I think that's going to create a bottleneck for a while in the center part of the county, and we'll have to plan for that. Won't necessarily increase the enrollment, but it'll just create issues that we have to work with. And of course, many of you are aware of the FDOT Conesa US 19, they're widening US 19 to three lanes in each direction, and the Hall River Bridge replacement, and the Duke Energy Project. But the staff, after reviewing all of the trends at the elementary, middle, and high, what we're proposing with respect to capacity is to modify the attendance boundaries to target 90% or lower at Pleasant Grove, which right now is at like 102%. La Canto Primary, we'd like to get that down to 90% or close, because it's a real manageable number, and because that school has the potential to grow the fastest, because it has the largest area in the zone. And the Inverness Primary, take it down to about 85% or lower. Homosas Elementary and Floral City, we'd like to raise the enrollment in these schools because they're so low, and that would give them more economy of scale at those schools. Homosas, we'd like to get it up to 90%, I think that's ambitious, but if we could get close to 85, between 85 and 90%. Floral City Elementary, about 80%. And then with respect to the middle schools, if you recall, the one, those of you who were here when we did the MGT study, they recommended that we align the middle school attendance boundaries with the high schools, and we changed the high school boundary when we remodeled Crystal River High School, Percifer Springs to Crystal River High School. So now we're proposing to move that same area over in the middle school, so those, those kids would be attending Crystal River High School anyway. This is a much larger area than the elementary areas. Essentially, this is Citrus Springs, and this would all, everything on the west side of Citrus Springs would essentially become part of Crystal River High School. And that would, it may not have a dramatic impact the first year, but as time goes on, there's a lot of vacant lots in that area, so they would all fill up, balance out, you know, for a longer period of time. And when you do a zoning change like this, it's, it's pretty much a given that you're going to grandfather in some students, like 5th graders and 8th graders, and those students would stay subject to providing their own transportation if they choose to, but in the future, the, the students who are in that zone would get over to a new school. So it kind of has an effect of, over time, you may not solve the problem entirely in one year, but over time, if you balance everything and you do it in accordance with how the trends are, are happening, you can really prolong the, the amount of time between rezones, which is what our goal is, is not to do this every year. We like to do this, every 10 years is a good number, but... So if you direct me to begin this process, what we would do is, we would set up a series of meetings at the receiving schools, and have the principals there and the district staff to answer questions, and to provide a PowerPoint presentation that shows how we develop the, the boundaries, which is primarily based on transportation.
I've got a question on the, on the plan, the excess capacity is kind of the flip-flop of the utilization rate, right? So when you said there's 39% excess capacity at Crystal River High School, then that's like saying there's 61% utilization rate, is that correct?
Right.
So the excess capacity is the amount that's not being utilized.
Right, exactly. And that school has got the, on paper, it has the most capacity. So this, this, what I just handed out, these are maps, and I want to thank the property appraisers office for helping us with this project. Les Cook's office has really helped us out a lot this year on this. But these are maps that is, depict the maximum area that we would be proposing to rezone. It doesn't necessarily mean that these are the areas exactly, but when we look at these utilization rates that are proposed, we believe that we can achieve them within these boundaries. So if you direct, direct us to proceed, what I'm going to do is send the schools that are affected, copies of the maps that are boundaries that are within their zone, so that they can see, you know, who may or may not be affected. And we'll also put these on the webpage. But as you can see, there's also tentative meeting dates on each map, so map one would be for Pleasant Grove boundary to be, to go to Hernando Elementary, and this would be a meeting on March 8th. Map two would be for Pleasant Grove Elementary area to go to Floral City, and this would be the same meeting. And then the next one, map three, Inverness Primary, Floral City, March 9th. And that's a small area, or not a small area, but a small number of students who are basically in the southernmost area, existing down for IPS.
About how many students is that on map three? I mean, that's a small...
Yeah, it's about 15 students in that area right now.
And you're saying, those students that may be going into the 5th grade next year, typically would have the option to continue at their, at their resupply.
If you choose to grandfather them in, they could, you have the option to either approve it or not approve it, or to make exceptions to it. And usually, the ones who were in their last year, you would make an exception that they could stay in their current school, subject to providing their own transportation.
We could make an exception if they were in the last two years.
Could, if you want to. We have to, if you want me to, I can look at, look at how that would affect the numbers.
Is that based on the number of kids that are coming to the county?
You don't really, I mean, we can talk about that, that person's issues. It's better to go by grade level than to do it by siblings, because there's always going to be siblings of criminal that aren't there yet, and then you have to deal with that over a much longer period of time. But I can look at that, but it's not as easy to project what's going to happen.
Mr. Dixon, I, I was there 10 years ago when you started, when you did rezone Central Ridge. I actually was, and I know Mr. Dixon knows this story, that I was, my kids were at Citrus Springs, and it was halfway through school, or my son was, and we got rezoned into Central Ridge, and I remember being a sack chair going, what are you doing? What is this going on? And, and having a lot of questions.
We know that, we were...
Exactly.
I think I was there and greeted them when they got to.
Exactly. You, and you were, you actually were the, you, you were brave to do that.
You were a school worker, I don't think.
No, no, I was, I was just a parent.
You were more than just a parent.
You're a sheep.
As a sack chairman.
I was sack chair. And I, and I was, you know, talking last night at the Citrus Springs Elementary SAP, and just kind of, you know, making them aware that we're going to be starting this process, but I got a lot of questions about the middle school. And, and I guess one of the things I'm just looking at, first of all, I'm grateful that we have you and that you're doing this, because your department is exceptional when it comes to this, and I'm again saying that as a previous parent that got rezoned. When we look at the middle schools, we, next year, we're going to begin with open enrollment. And so, part of our policy, as well as state statute, together means that if we're at under 90% occupants or capacity, then students and families will have a choice as to where they're looking to go. It looks like right now, three of the four schools are under 90%, and the backup seems to show that the idea would be to bring Citrus Springs middle, under 90% by the zoning change. And my only thing would be is, I think you should go forward, personally, I mean, I'm saying, I, I think as a board, it's a good idea for all, to go forward with the process, but I, I would certainly not be opposed after you're done with it and we get to the nitty gritty of saying, maybe we delay that, or I think we should be open to just, I'm not talking about elementary, I'm talking about just the middle. And my thinking would be is, if they're going to have an open enrollment change for next year, and we're all going to be under 90%, and basically everybody we rezoned could end up going to the other school, go back to their school anyway, the difference would be, we wouldn't be providing transportation, is I believe a factor.
So you're saying delay means delay by a year, a school year?
Yeah, I'm saying if, I think, I think Mr. Dixon should continue on what he's recommending, but you're going to come back to us before we get into adoption of this.
Right, but I, I did give some thought to that, and try to figure out how the new school choice provisions were going to impact rezoning. And I think that specifically for the middle school, we would also notify the students who are 5th graders at Citrus Springs Elementary and Central Ridge Elementary, so they're aware that their middle school is being rezoned, maybe give them the option to provide transportation and continue. and continue on to the school, and if they thought they were going to attend, that would be up to the board. But with respect to the Controlled Open Enrollment Plan, it does provide a bit of a wrinkle to the process, but I think the only way to really implement it and make it work is to, for the schools who are being rezoned and have students zoned out, to wait until they know what their enrollment is before they start approving new requests to come in for their students. The biggest difference between how it's being, how it's going to be done in 17, 18, and how it's being done now is that for students who are already there on an out-of-zone, they're going to be grandfathered in, so they're not going to have to reapply every year like they have in the past. You know, we've approved out-of-zone requests for every student, every year, and now if they're there, they get to stay there until they reach the highest grade level, so they don't have to reapply. But if they have siblings, and siblings want to go there in their out-of-zone, then they have to apply. So it is going to create a little bit of a...
And that's what I think with this, what I'm saying is, at the end of the day, if we're rezoning to bring that at 85% in Citrus Springs Middle, and the rest of them are going to end up being well under 80%, then pretty much, everybody's going to be able to go wherever they want. So if you are at fifth grade now and you had planned on going to Citrus Springs Middle, you're still going to be able to do it, but you will have to provide the transportation, I believe is the primary difference. But that's why I'm saying, you know, when we come down to that one, I think that one's one, you know, middle school is one that I'm just saying, maybe we look at a little closer to say, maybe that one we delay, or maybe we move forward with it. But I'm, that one, I'm at least more open. Elementary, I know we've got to get those kids, unfortunately, we've got too many schools that are passing at the seams, and that really just, we need to really read that.
Well, what we'll do is, we'll come forward with the options for you to go either way, and then you can choose which way. We'll look at the numbers of how many kids we can grandfather in, we can grandfather in the fifth graders, and how that would affect the enrollment the first year, and then you can choose between the two options. And if you have other options that you would like me to bring forward, just mentally, and I'll bring forth any options that you want to see. I would not suggest siblings, though, because siblings puts a whole big wrinkle on it. You can't always tell who they are. It's difficult to do siblings, but we definitely can do fifth grade and eighth grade, and just look at delay, you know, and that kind of thing. So I'll just make a note for middle school to have.
About how many kids are in Map Five? And if I recall, that area that you're talking about, again, follows suit with the, with the pattern, the feeder pattern to Crystal River High School?
It's exactly the same.
Yeah. That's what you rezoned back into Crystal River High School a few years ago.
That, I think, should be a really count consideration on any...
That's the high school.
Because the high school is there.
So it would match up with the high school.
So the middle schools largely overlay, but obviously, we have three middle schools and, I mean, we have four middle schools and three high schools. So some, some always have gone to different...
Yes, there's always going to be some, but Citrus Springs would all go to Crystal River High School. They all, they all go to Crystal River High School now, so then they would all go to Crystal River Middle School. So the middle school and the high school feeder pattern would align from Crystal River.
So Citrus Springs students, though, Citrus Springs Middle School students now go to typically one of two high schools. Will that change?
No, the high schools would not change. The high school, we're not proposing to make any changes to the high schools.
No, no, I just meant those kids are still, I think I missed it.
The high school and the middle school boundaries would be the same for Citrus Springs, if this is approved the way it's proposed. So what I'll do is, I'll bring it forth the way it's proposed, and also bring forth a couple of other options for you to look at and see, and try to give you a quantitative assessment of grandfathering in and how that would affect it. I think you'll still accomplish what you really want to do, and that is, over time, you would have people moving through the system, and the boundaries would become more equalized. So even if you choose to grandfather in a few students, you're still going to get a benefit over time. And that's really what we're trying to accomplish, not just the first year, but, you know, five years from now, we'd like to not have to do this again for a few years.
Do you need a motion then on this? Because it did say, "Review and accept," and because it was a public hearing, I didn't know if you needed that.
I think we're going to, we may need three motions altogether, or maybe...
I think just number five was called.
Okay. The first, the first thing would be to direct staff to move forward with the attendance boundary changes and set the public meetings.
Right. So go ahead and say that again, how did you need it?
Just direct staff to move forward with the rezoning process and set the public meetings.
I'd go ahead and move that we accept the summary of the school capacity report year end for 2016, and move forward with setting the public hearing as presented.
Hey, we have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second from Ms. Powers. Could there be questions or comments? All those in favor, aye. Vote she carries five zero, Mr. Kennedy.
And then the next item would be to approve the 2017-18 Controlled Open Enrollment Plan as presented. And if you'd like me to, I can elaborate on it, but basically, it is, it just outlines the process that we follow for reviewing those requests and his provisions for, we have transparency, so we have our enrollment report that we generate on a weekly basis that will be available for the parents so they can apply for schools that are under 90%.
I've got another question. So this is, this adoption is for next school year?
Right.
And I noticed in here, you know, the plan details the eligibility requirements, the application process, and there's kind of, you know, one of the things I just was curious, so how are we going to, if we vote to adopt this today, there's not going to be another vote on this process, is there? I mean, this is actually adopting of this, this policy?
Well, it's for the 17-18 plan. We have a 16-17 plan that we're following now, but this will replace it in July when we start for next year.
So what I want to know is, what is the plan for the district to, you know, make changes noted and get the word out as far as communicating the application process? I mean, what, how are we going to handle all that?
Well, what we did on that was, we generate every year a letter that goes out to the parents who have students who are currently attending schools of choice or out-of-zone schools, and it gives them the information about how to apply for that process. And it says in the letter this year that went out in January and February that you don't have to reapply every year, and, but we did provide a little form that they can notify us if they don't plan to reapply, so that we can free up a space for another student to apply. But that information has already been sent out.
But that information's only going to those affected students who are out-of-zone, in the out-of-zone school now, correct? Is there a plan to communicate that with?
It'll be on the webpage, and I can, it'll be on the district webpage, but I could also send it to the district.
Well, I guess, I just, just wanted to discuss that.
And the principals put it in their newsletters, but it, like I said, it's not really that much of a difference, other than the 90% capacity, the existence of the report, so they can check the capacity on a routine basis, and the process that we follow is very similar to the way it's been done in the past, because we were already giving a capacity analysis when the principals were approving those in the past, the availability required to, but we already...
Can we have a...
I just have one question. Because we have the Tech Academy at Citrus, we have the Art Academy at La Canto, we have the Health Academy at Crystal River High School. Those children are included in that out-of-zone, or are they going to get a special better because they're part of an academy, they plan to stay?
That's a good question. Any program that has a certain fixed number of seats, like the Ivy Program, they would be able to attend, subject to availability. It is still a competitive process, and they still have to have space in the program. So the difference is that now, with the new system, they probably wouldn't be kicked out, if they dropped out of the program like they were in the past, they would be allowed to stay at the school once they're there.
Mr. Dixon, could I ask you to pause for a minute? We need to see if we have anybody that would like to speak.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any citizen comments, any voters, anybody wishing to speak? All right, thank you, Mr. Dixon.
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure that those academies would be there, because I know they have to make their applications and get their acceptance and maybe include.
Right, those will be allocated spaces first, I think, based on the availability within the programs, because they're based on how many teachers they have to teach their subjects and so forth and so on.
Now, when it says on here, the method for notifying the child, it's 30 days on US mail, is that just kind of a, is that a requirement? Or, I mean, we obviously call, will we call them to let them know?
Sometimes we do. What we put in, in the Controlled Open Enrollment Plan, for the most part, is what's required, even though many times we see some of the things that are in there, but we put in there what's required. So we, our open enrollment, that's a good point, is open year-round. A lot of districts, they have an enrollment period where you have to apply within a certain window, but we start in March, the middle of March, and we allow them all the way till the next end of that school year. So, so we have always done it that way, and we did, we elected to continue to do it that way.
And then we'll just review that with open enrollment next year to see how that works.
Right, if we have to make adjustments to it, but we get constant feedback.
And I know we, I was going to say, we've really had a type of Controlled Open Enrollment going on for years. I mean, we've tried to accommodate, I think, as best as possible.
Is our second vote being on?
To approve the 2017-18 Controlled Open Enrollment Plan as presented.
All right, I'll make the motion that we adopt the 2017-18 Controlled Open Enrollment Plan.
And the question for the public?
That'd be another one.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Dodge, a second from Ms. Powers. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor, aye. Vote she carries five zero. And the third thing that we need to vote on is...
You just said the public hearing for April 11th, for the new attendance boundaries.
Adoption, April 11th is the advertisement for a public hearing.
Okay, discounts?
Second.
Thank you. The motion, my, discounts, a second by Mr. Kennedy, to set these attendance boundaries on April 11th. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor, aye. Vote she carries five zero.
So when I come back in April, I'll have the new match.
Yes. All right, thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
Okay, so this finance, first amendment, take the poll. All right. We have a request for a five-minute break. Five minutes. Be back.